Good evening, welcome. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a little feedback, it's all good. Welcome again, and thank you for joining us. We have some good things at our school board meeting tonight, and so we're excited to get started. First thing, though, is I'm going to turn it over to Director Perkins, who's going to lead us through the land acknowledgement.
Thank you. Evergreen Public Schools, is this on? Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples in the Cowalts tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship, and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you, Rob. All right, next up is our, to adopt the, this evening's agenda, so if we can get a motion for that.
I move to adopt tonight's agenda as presented.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to get to some of that fun stuff that I was alluding to a little bit ago. So, we're going to go right into special recognition, and first we have a music performance by the Covington Middle School students. Did we have an introduction, Corin Rio? Okay, perfect, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for having us. This is a group of sixth graders who performed, they started preparing this piece for their solo ensemble festival in, right after spring break, and they call themselves The Wicked Woodwinds. Sixth graders who all started in fifth grade band, and we have Brenda Castillo Solano on clarinet, Charlotte Nyamire on bass clarinet, Rihanna Gerza on alto saxophone, and Ava Bowman also on alto saxophone. And they are going to play today "Spring" from The Four Seasons by Vivaldi.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Of course we do.
Okay, great.
So much better, so much better than a harpsichord. I played bass clarinet in middle school, and Charlotte, thank you for coming in to play bass clarinet. It was beautiful to hear it again. That was really musical. It was together and in tune, and just, I know I'm not a judge or anything, but I enjoyed listening to you.
I was going to say that we should listen, hear from Sullivan, because these are sixth graders, right? And then Covington, they're probably Heritage Track. Sullivan, you want to tell them what you do at Heritage with the band?
Hi, I'm the drum major at Heritage, and first of all, I just want to say you guys did so well. I did solo and ensemble when I was in seventh grade, and I want to say this literature that you guys are playing is great. Tomorrow morning, the Heritage Wind Symphony is going to California to compete in a festival, both their jazz band and their wind symphony, and you guys are going to have a great experience throughout the rest of middle school and throughout high school, and I'm so glad you guys are in music. Stay in music, please. It's life-changing, it's such a great experience, you're going to have so many great opportunities, and I'm really glad you guys are here. Thank you for performing for us.
So that would, that would be my question. Do all four of you plan on continuing to play throughout middle school and then into high school?
Yeah, I think we all do, right?
Yeah. Excellent. How many have you been playing longer than since fifth grade? Who started before fifth grade? So just since fifth grade? You guys are amazing.
Basically this year.
Good for you.
That makes it even more amazing.
Good job, guys. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you for having us.
It's not that good at the end of sixth grade.
All right, next on our agenda is the Evergreen Award, more good stuff. So we're going to bring up Janay Gomes to introduce the Evergreen Awards for us this evening. Good evening, Janay.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Boyd, thank you for having me. This evening, we're going to do our Evergreen Awards. It will be the last one before you for the school year. As a reminder, there's three awards, one for certificated, classified, and then this evening we have a team for you. I'm going to start with certificated from Image Elementary, and Principal Kathleen Keller is going to introduce and say a few words.
Good evening. Tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing you to TJ Schreiner. He's the Evergreen, one of the Evergreen Award winners tonight, and I was going to read just a brief nomination statement from his peer, David Heitzman. David says, "I've known and watched TJ work with many students over the years, and I've never observed a more patient teacher. Whenever a volunteer is needed for an extra project, TJ is always willing to help out. Sometimes I tell him he should be more selective about what he's asked to do because his plate is so full, but he just shrugs it off and continues to help anyone who needs it. He has led our safety patrol for years and coaches our Image basketball team in addition to coaching a flag football after-school activity. I recommend TJ Schreiner for the Evergreen Award because of his fine character and his willingness to always go the extra mile to provide a positive experience for all the students at Image Elementary."
I just wanted to say a few words. First of all, I'm very honored and humbled to accept this award. I feel like I have a whole staff back at Image that's worthy of this award, but I'm definitely honored to receive it. And I wanted to take a minute to thank Kathleen and Lisa, my two administrators. I wouldn't be here without them, so I want to thank them for all their great support. And just the Image family, we have great kids, great families, great staff, and again, thank you to all of you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Our next one will be our classified award, and it will be from Mill Plain Elementary, and Principal Jen Dowell is going to introduce and then say a few words.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting us here tonight. It is with a lot of excitement that I introduce you to Ann Bruce, a paraprofessional in our building who supports our ML learners and all of us at Mill Plain. I wanted to read the nomination that was put in place by Abra Mater, who's our instructional coach and works really closely with Ann and our ML department, and has for a long time. So, she says, "Ann Bruce is an incredible bilingual ML staff member who serves students and families here at Mill Plain Elementary. Ann goes above and beyond on a daily basis, seeking to support our ML learners the best, in the best way that she can. She comes early, stays late, and works many hours on her own time in order to seek out resources, learn curriculum, and design scaffolds for the students she works with. She regularly collaborates with teachers and does an exceptional job to understand the learning targets and needs for each subject area and student she works in, with. If you know Ann, you can literally feel her love and dedication to the students she serves. She has a caring heart and a kind soul devoted to making a positive difference for students. She attends many of our family events in order to build strong relationships with the family she works with, and also volunteers as a coach and positive role model in Girls on the Run, an after-school program that fosters self-esteem, self-confidence, and leadership skills for girls. In this program, the girls train and eventually run a 5K for a culminating event, which they did last weekend. She motivates and inspires the girls. She coaches while also connecting to families. If you work with Ann, you are privileged as she exemplifies strong learning partnerships with students." And I just can't reiterate those words enough and really speak to what a gift Ann is to the community at Mill Plain. Our students, our staff, our whole community benefits because of her service to our students and families. Ann's been a huge partner in our equity work. She volunteers to be on our equity team. She has been a leader in our Hispanic Family Nights, and just goes above and beyond for the work of equity. She's also partners with us on our school improvement initiative. She joined our team last week and supported families and teachers and administrators in building school improvement goals for students based on data. And she, like Abra said, helps to promote school events. She's at everything, talking with parents, speaking with families in Spanish, just really promoting a place where everyone feels as they belong. So thank you, Ann, and congratulations on your award tonight.
Thank you.
I just want to say very quickly that it's a privilege to work with the amazing students and families that we have at Mill Plain, and I feel very fortunate that I get to do so alongside such a positive and dedicated admin team and staff. So thank you.
Thank you.
Our final award this evening will be for a team. They're from Columbia Valley Elementary, and Leah Torres will be introducing and speaking.
Hello, thank you so much for creating this space for me to honor these amazing educators. I'll start with introductions. This is our, our first grade team, teaching team at Columbia Valley, and it's made up by DeeDee Williams, first grade teacher, general education teacher, Mary Jane Pudlitsky, we all call her Mrs. P. because the Pudlitsky part is very challenging, who is one of our special education teachers, Margaret Heideman, who is a first grade general education teacher, Cam Cruz, our instructional coach, and Amy Moran, our other first grade general education teacher. And this team, I just really feel so excited and thrilled to elevate their work and tell you all how they have come together to collaborate, to create just amazing math workshops for our students that offer ambitious instruction and high-leverage practices that have an impact on student growth and student identity as mathematicians. We have first graders who are absolutely secure in their confident, confidence that they are mathematicians, and that math is important, and everyone can do it, and everyone should learn math. The results are amazing. The first grade students demonstrated both exceptional progress and exceptional proficiency on their winter interim assessments. You know, they hit that sweet spot of high growth and high performance. But more importantly, they have, these educators have created spaces where our first graders really believe in what they can do and understand that productive struggle is a good thing, and it builds their identities as mathematicians. So, we, we do a survey, as you all know, the Youth Truth Survey, that surveys our third, fourth, and fifth grade students, and they were asked some questions about math identity. I feel like I can ask questions in math class when I don't understand something. I keep trying even when it's hard. I can be good at math if I work hard at it. It's good for everyone to learn math. Those are kind of those math identity, math confidence questions that are asked of our third, fourth, and fifth graders. I thought it might be fun to ask our first graders those questions, too. And the positive results to those statements ranged anywhere from 92% to 100% in first grade. "It is good for everyone to learn math." 100% of our first graders believe that statement. "And I keep trying even when it's hard." 100% of our first graders believe that statement. So, and that is by, you know, by no, it is all thanks to the work of this amazing collaborative team. They find spaces and places and times to work together, and not only did they really commit to the math curriculum and, and really embrace that and work together to, to put all of that together, but they also believed in their scholars, and they knew that those six and seven-year-olds walking into their math workshops every day brought with them inherent problem-solving skills, and they lifted up those gifts every single day for the benefit of everyone in their, in their classes. And like Mary Jane says, "The great thing about our math instruction in Evergreen is that everyone's thinking is valid," and they model that for the students. Every student's thinking is valid. So, thank you, I am absolutely honored to be in your presence. You are amazing educators. We're all so fortunate to have you.
That was good stuff. Yes, I think we want to get a picture with all the winners. Careful. All right, those were some amazing stories. We're doing a lot of great things in our schools, and so it's always great, good to be reminded of the good work that's happening, and just the work that we're doing around mathematics. That was really encouraging to hear those words. All right, next on our agenda is the Board Consent Agenda. We'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move approval of the Board Consent Agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, we'll do it again for the Superintendent Consent Agenda.
I move to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, next up is Matters Reserved for Board Action, and we are going to have 2023 EPS Strategic Plan. Dr. Williams will be presenting this evening.
The last session, just a quick recap and drawing your attention, if you have your documents with you, to Slide 5, which is where this beautiful plan begins, again, from our communications team. So what you will be approving, approving tonight are the, the elements of our strategic plan, so that we can continue to, to implement towards that vision. So we have our vision statement, our mission and beliefs, the foundations, the goals, and ultimately the theory of action, how we plan to operationalize that. And just for a quick visual, especially if you weren't here last time, our team and all of the, the partners that have been involved, put together this beautiful document that just summarizes the journey. And you can see that we've had literally thousands of participants in forming this process. Our vision that we've teased out to really articulate what it looks like and feels like from the student perspective, the core values that we have tried to articulate that we operate by as we're doing this work. The, where it all started last year with the team that launched this idea and your leadership as a board, who, being insistent that we need to have a strategic plan and to operationalize it, and that's what we've developed. We have our metrics and outcomes that we'll be using to, to monitor if we are on track, and this is, again, the theory of action that will, that we will use as a guiding document for us. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have, or any comments.
Yeah, I'll just add to this. We had an in-depth presentation last time.
Yes.
And just reiterating the thanks to the community, the, the staff, yourself, and all the people that put so much blood, sweat, and tears into this plan, and now the hard work begins.
Yes.
Because a plan is only as good as how you execute it, and I am 100% confident that our staff and our district and our principals and our leadership is up to the task, excited to move forward to, to execute this. What you see in front of you is the outward-facing documents. We have many, many, many inward-facing documents with metrics, with goals, with objectives, and plans to make what we hope, what our vision of student success become true. So, I just want to reiterate, thank you, thank the team for putting this together, and just say that now, it's, let's go, it's, we're ready and up to the task to, to put it into action so our students succeed and feel a sense of belonging.
100%.
Oh, go ahead. No, I was just going to ask for questions or comments from the board.
Well, I have a comment and a question. First, the comment, I appreciate, as we've been looking into this and developing this, and have, you know, all of us have been engaged with the process in, at some way or another. I like the accountability piece where we actually will be able to see in, in almost real time, the progress. So it's not like you have to wait a year, and then it's like, it's not working, or this is going great, let's, you know, move it up, or what, I mean, I like it that we have the ability to really be able to see what's happening in a timely manner, so if we need to make adjustments, we can, and I, and I appreciate that. Plus, just being accountable to the kids and the families and our community for making progress. And then, the question I had was, did we hear from folks in the community or anything after the last board meeting? Just, just curious if we'd heard anything or had any questions that came, came forward then?
Uh, no.
That's a great question, Victoria, because I think that through this process, really, it's been about a year and a half of workings, and I think all five of us have had an opportunity to be a part of it at some point, whether the beginnings of just gathering information and feedback to even early stages of going out and doing some community presentations. And then when we got Dr. Campbell involved and really refined how we were working on the process. So it's just that first slide where you showed, where how many people were involved in gathering input.
Yeah.
I'm excited to get out there and start showing people the plan.
Yeah, and this plan would not have happened had it not been for the insistence of the board to make sure, under very difficult circumstances, last year and continuing to have challenges this year, we stayed the course. That was clear when you hired me, that you wanted us to stay the course and, and get a plan done, and not only a plan that gets stakeholder, wide stakeholder feedback, but one that we can put into action. And, and I think this plan before you is, is exactly what you envisioned and what you hoped for when you set us down that course.
I'm really excited about it myself, and I did have a question that you might have to get back to me on, because it's, when I look at the, the Goals, Metrics, Outcomes page, we're going to seven, and think about that in terms of satellite data and street data, which was a concept you presented to us a number of months ago. A lot of what's listed here is the satellite data. How does the street data idea fold into that?
That's a very good question, and so, if you remember, our SIP support structure is where we go out and support our principals now through the lens of the strategic plan. And in that, we have them identify what are the process measures along the way that they're looking at. So, anything from classroom observation data, surveys they've implemented, like you just saw Leah Torres talk about with her math team, that was some street data that they were using, and it produced some of those amazing results that you heard in terms of them closing the gap with their students on receiving special services and their students not receiving services. And so, that's, that's a part of our rhythm now, and we'll, we'll continue, we'll continue that work.
I think it'll be important to, to surface that, as we talk about the results of the strategic plan and the, the results policies reports and so forth. It'd be perfect for that sort of model. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to the staff who put a lot of time in after-work.
Yes.
To do this for the last year and change. I know that there were hours of meetings and lots of just reading, and just, just a lot of stuff went into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Weatherspoon, and I'm thinking about just our team who's still committed, like the goal area leads, who are committed to continuing to go back to the stakeholders who informed the plan and received that input about how it's going, to your point around not waiting until a year later, but as we go, how are we doing and what do we need to refine?
I unfortunately missed the presentation at the last meeting, but I was able to re-watch it. Love the document, and you had, you know, identified the communications team of putting that together, so they did a great job of kind of taking all of those years of information and putting it into one. This has definitely been a long process, and I think the work you guys did is amazing. I like how it's all been broken out into different levels, not just elementary, but we go, you know, kinder or, you know, birth to early learning, and then we go with the higher, because there are different levels there, and then going into high school and post-graduation. But one of the things that really made me smile in the whole thing was the report card. Like, you already set up the report card, you already have it identified for each of the goals, so that, I mean, we're data-driven, and that was, I just kind of had to giggle when I saw that, because I was like, yes, more data! Because we like when we can go out and be, you know, we used to be able to say by, if we get a kid by the eighth grade and have them through, you know, there's 80% graduation, and being able to have that specific data definitely helps us as well. So I appreciate you for putting that in there. Thank you very much.
Wonderful, and again, that's the insistence of a great team.
Yeah, and being more specific, too, about what we're going to measure and continue to measure, so that way we really can see trends and where we need to make adjustments and improvements. Or celebrate our successes, like we just saw with our first grade Columbia Valley team, right? There's lots of successes.
100%, yes.
Good to see that.
Any other questions or comments from the board? John, anything else?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, well, since this is an action item this evening, we'll go ahead and take audience questions or comments before we take it to a vote. So is there anyone in the audience that has a question or comment on the strategic plan only? If you'll come up to the podium, go ahead and come on up, Chuck.
Hi, and good evening, you guys.
Evening.
I had just a couple of questions. So the the first one has to do with the high leverage practices. And in one, I can't tell which page it is because I've just got to zoom in on it here, but it's delineated as a not done thing yet as from as far as from the admin level. I'm just assuming at this point that these practices have not been developed, that there's no actual from them from that designation of ND, that there's no actual, let's say, vehicle in place to embed those practices at the district level.
Oh, we haven't.
Yeah, yeah, please, please.
Yeah, we have identified 13 high leverage practices in four particular areas around planning, assessment, instruction, and evaluation. We have done a bit of cross pollinating across departments. So when we had the para educator that was working with multilingual learners, our special services team, all of those entities came together to pretty much cross pollinate, look at best practices, and identify what are the practices we want to see across our system. And we have a, it's a monthly or, yeah, I think monthly structure, our coordinated supports where that's that's the work of our specialists pushing into schools and identifying what those high leverage structures are. We'll leverage the June Planning Summit to help administrators dive deep into what those practices are. And we've also identified some days for those practices to be rolled out in the school when we return in August. So they they've been defined and we we're continuing to make sure that they're accessible to to teachers.
Yeah, the document shows an August rollout on the last page there.
Thank you for that. My confusion was in the the letter designation next to one of those. The second question I had was just about the team that was pulled together. Unfortunately, on the la on the last slide, it's covered up by the scholar first, so there may be names in there that I can't see. But I'm curious why we don't see names like counselors, at-risk advocates, security guards, special education teachers, para educators, the the other people who are truly on the ground, what we what I can, again, it could be covered up, but what I can see is a lot of secondary teachers, admins, and principals.
That was one of the committees, but John.
We do have some of the positions that Chuck made on there. We did have para educators and teachers and that I can't speak to, I think we may have had a counselor, I'm looking back here at my team. Yeah, we had counselor. So and I think you have access to that in one of the previous documents, the list of participants that were on the core planning teams and the other various teams and and happy to display that.
It's just, I don't know if you see the on the slide where it's covered up part of the name.
Yeah, it's because of when you animate slides and the pictures cover each other up, so we can we can clean that up.
Thank you, I appreciate that. My my last question is just about something that Superintendent Boyd just just mentioned. So you'd mentioned some inward facing documents. I'm curious in terms of what the board is voting on tonight. Are they voting on this presentation that's public here? Or are they voting on everything, including those inward facing documents? Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Yep, and you're voting on the on the plan here in front of you.
Once this, if we vote on this and it moves forward, this would be the plan that we'll go out then and start sharing with.
Correct.
I think the list on the last page was just the core planning team, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think it was.
It was.
There were all these other committees and and teams and.
Because I remember that part of the process being that we would workshop something like the vision statement and then Dr. Campbell would and and Dr. Williams would take that to students and schools and leadership in a lot of other places. And feedback would come back from that and refining correct what we'd done. So we made sure we had the voices come through that way and it doesn't really show all of the 6,000 names on the page.
Right, exactly. This is a summary of those groups, district planning team, leadership team, core planning team, doesn't name all of their names in particular. This document actually names all of the core planning team members, but again, you're not going to see all the, you know, the other hundreds of names of participants on the other ways we asked for them. And of course, yes, we did have the scholar first.
Which it probably doesn't even include the people that were in the initial.
No, it doesn't. Yeah, it doesn't include that.
Because then I know we had parents, we had students involved in that initial core planning team. All right, any other questions from anyone in the audience about the strategic plan? Any other questions from the board? Sullivan, do you have anything you wanted to add? No? Okay. All right, well, with that, we'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the strategic plan presented this evening.
Second.
It's a moved in second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. I'm excited to get this rolling. Fantastic work and it's going to be fun this summer seeing all the work that goes into it and when it gets rolled out this fall.
It's already rolling.
It's rolling.
Yeah, we're rolling.
They've already got some of it.
Thank you so much.
Did someone have their hand up that they wanted to make a comment? Oh, did you still want to come up and say something about the strategic plan? We'd still like to hear from you if you'd like to come up. I apologize, I didn't see your hand go up.
So my my question was.
Can you tell us your name too for the record?
My name's Deb, Deb Bogan. I'm parent of a student here in the district. My question was if, like, as you're gathering data as it's being implemented and stuff, and if there are areas that are not as well as projected, what is the revision standard or what is the opportunity for revision ongoing during the process? Thanks.
Thank you. I think that's a that's a great question. One of the one of the vehicles with our current structure is to pause and analyze data. So let's say we pull the fall data in October and they have plans and some glaring information comes out about a certain group of students that we are not meeting their needs. What schools have done in the past is they've made some schedule adjustments, they've identified some additional services. But I think it's really trying to keep a keen eye and knowing what measures we're going to use ahead of time so that we can make those adjustments. But the way we've designed our leadership gatherings, it we've kind of built that in to the way we work. So when I go out to support the three schools that I'm looking at as a district support person, we are sitting with the principals and the leadership team analyzing data and helping them make a real time adjustments as part of our work at this point.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your question. All right, next up is instructional materials adoption. We have astronomy curriculum that we're going to discuss this evening. This is a first reading. We did workshop it at our last board meeting and thank you for joining us this evening.
Yep, I'm Crystal Wolf, Science Tosa for the district. And I'm bringing to you a small adoption on the scale of adoptions. Our astronomy course is an elective at two of our comprehensive high schools. We have that course at both Union High School and Heritage High School, and we have hopes to expand it. It is a course that can be offered at any high school should there be enough student interest to run that course. We have a need for a new instructional resource. Our last textbook is no longer available from Pearson, the publishing company. So the IMC evaluated my process, but basically the short summary is the two teachers who teach astronomy plus an administrator and myself started a process last spring to identify possible textbooks to consider. We had a starting list of six, and this is the the final one that we come tonight to recommend for purchase, Understanding Our Universe. We really like this textbook because of the support for students. Our teachers were really able to use this in their classrooms this year as a pilot. Those classes include a range of students from nine through 12 of varying levels of reading abilities and science experience and aptitude. And so this resource was definitely the strongest of the ones that we considered. And so one slight adjustment on my my one pager here, we I reached out to our building principals about staffing for next year, and of course, they're all in the process of really finalizing those numbers. So it looks like we're going to only need 66 textbooks this year, so that number will be adjusted as soon as I get the revised quotes, but you can expect that cost to come down. Any questions from the board?
Do we have questions? I know that we covered a lot of it in our workshop and part of it was around the cost of the textbook, but right now from and just as a reminder, there's no current curriculum, correct, they're using?
They've been using this as a pilot and they've been supplementing with other things that they can find online, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Rob.
Oh, I'm just just trying to formulate the the question into words. It's, thank you for talking about the reduced cost. No, we discussed that a little bit in the workshop and and then one of us did a per student per year kind of thing, and it turned out to be like eight bucks or nine bucks.
$29.
29?
Yeah, $29 per student.
Yeah, science resources tend to historically be a little more expensive than some of our other resources, yeah.
Sorry, I forgot the 20 next to the 9.
But for that amount, we thought that for that many students, and we don't know exactly because the cost will come down, but for that many.
Around 12,000, but I'm still getting the finalized quotes.
Yeah, so about half of what we have up there. So, I mean, really, it's still going to be about the same amount of per student for six years. It really is a small investment into the amount of learning that they will get out of this course.
If a student interest increases, does the contract allow for the same price?
We would add, so if we go with like the six-year subscription, which was the most cost effective, say that expanded, we would add on, we can add on five-year licenses. So they're a little bit adjusted for that additional year. You know, we can do one-off licenses as we need to, so there's just kind of some flexibility based on our needs, but I would rather purchase the right amounts, not over purchase because, yeah, they do roll over. So if we don't use all of the licenses next year, it's so it's better to under budget than to over purchase, yeah.
Thank you.
I I really, you know, and just perusing through the materials, it looked exciting and and it, you know, it had great photographs and I think it's a very topical subject. And I think we'll have, I'd like to see more kids be real engaged with it because it looked fascinating.
You know, it is a really great elective to offer. You know, we have our traditional biology, chemistry, physics courses, and earth and space science are often the ones that get left out of the high school experience, and we're working on ways to integrate them into our core science. But having a dedicated elective can really get some of the students excited about a specific branch of science.
I like the idea too of the UW credit for the students that are able to to get that, but it sounds like there's an accreditation for the.
Yeah, so one of our teachers has been able to get through the UW accreditation process, so those students at Union have the option for UW credit. And we'd like to expand that, but it is a pretty selective process that that they have as an organization.
You said there'd be some volunteer opportunities in the coming months.
Yes, I I have mentioned your name to our teachers who do the Goldendale Observatory field trip. The joys of riding a school bus home after midnight.
We can do hard things.
Yep.
All right, any other questions or comments from the board? All right, since it's a curriculum adoption, even though it's a first reading, we'll go ahead and take questions or comments from the audience on the astronomy curriculum only. Anyone have any questions or comments? All right, then we will go ahead and entertain a motion to move this to a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, we'll move it to a second reading at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you, Crystal.
All right, next up is the superintendent report, so I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Boyd.
Thank you. No more exciting time in astronomy than now. So that is a real timely adoption coming up. Speaking of coming up, graduations are coming up, and Lori's been providing information about the times and so forth and have names for you because we know you like to connect with the graduates that you know, so that'll be fun, looking forward to that coming up. It's the single biggest thing that we do as an event and the culminated culmination of 13 years of our students in our system, so really looking forward to that. Excited about the strategic plan, not only just what we've seen today, the work behind the scenes, but the work ahead of the board to engage in routines around this, to monitor, track, and to make sure that we're doing our due diligence as a board governance team to help support, help sponsor, help keep track and monitor what we're doing. And as one of our people that ask questions about that, yeah, we we do have to make sure that we're monitoring, tracking, and adjusting real time to make sure that our students are getting their needs met. This will guide our district for the next four, five, six years, so that's real exciting to have that in in progress. Really amazed and impressed as I get out into schools, the great work that our principals and teachers are doing to finish strong. You know, it's it's been a challenge last year and this year again. And, you know, May, we call it the 100 Days of May, and during the 100 Days of May, our leaders and our teachers and our staff across the district are just doing amazing work as I'm in schools, just noticing that and wanted to give them a little shout out for that. We were able to recognize Zoom Info at the Wassa Regional Superintendents Meeting for their continued support of our school districts, so that was an exciting, I have the opportunity with the regional superintendents to nominate a group that's made a big impact on us, and Zoom Info has supported us and they've really, really supported us financially to do things for our students, so wanted to shout out Zoom Info as well. Tomorrow, we have our district art show in the library, so if you get a chance to stop by then to see the amazing work, you'll be blown away. I encourage people in the audience too to get by to the public library right next door here and look at that just amazing creativity that our students demonstrate in art across the district. It's it will blow you away, and I'm looking forward to getting out there and and seeing it myself. A few days left in school, we have a sub appreciation event. You know, we have had every district across the state and nation has had challenges getting substitutes, so this coming, I think Thursday afternoon, we'll have a sub appreciation event just to thank them for, you know, showing up and participating in our school and to encourage more and more people to get involved as substitutes. Great day of at the Skills Trade Center. We had a really nice event where all the board members were able to be there and and experience that, so breaking ground on a new facility that will really support a pathway for our students in the construction trades is very exciting. Our CTE programs are robust and excellent, and this will just add to the repertoire that we have out there in the district. So that's my report, Madam President, for today.
Thank you. All right, next is a department update, teaching and learning and equity update. Dr. Williams and Clarissa Hightower will come up and present to us this evening.
Did it right? Okay, great. Good evening, members of the board and community. I am here to give you an update on our teaching, learning, and equity departments. We have 17 school days left, and our teaching, learning, and equity departments are working very hard to make sure those days count. And I'm going to talk with you about some of the ways that they are doing this is in by no means all the things, but just some of the key things for you. So as you can see or have you seen, myself and Dr. Williams are wearing eyelash yarn lace as we are celebrating Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Month. And you might remember Erin Helenihi stood before you a few meetings ago. So he and his family handmade these lays for our equity and department staff, but he also, his family and his wife, two children, made some for you all as well, and so I'm going to give these to Lori. Lori, yours is on your desk.
That was sweet.
Thank you.
He wanted me to share the cultural context behind the lay, and that is as you are preparing the lay, you are holding the person or people in your mind as you make them so that when they wear them, they feel like they are surrounded by the love and support of the person who made them. And so he wanted to make sure that you had them, so those are they. So those are they. You're very welcome. Our teaching and learning equity department is also, has been engaged in preparing for our Equity and SEL Day for next year. So we're, you know, hitting the ground running with planning for that. And we have assembled a team from all, with representation from across our departments, as well as school staff, such as counselors, instructional coaches, and language specialists. And they're helping us design the professional development for that day. We will also have students from our SAFE Committee, as well as the Equity Advisory Committee, yes, them too, to help us not only plan that day, but also present on that day. And so we're really excited to have students present to our teachers. Good choice with the yellow. All right. My amazing partner, Jamila, has also been helping to familiarize the staff here at AFC with the, I have draft here, which you all just approved, so with the strategic plan, and specifically the goal areas, as these are the tools that we will use to guide all the support we provide for schools moving forward. And that is no small feat. Our attendance team, who you got to meet a few meetings ago, is in contact with about 30-plus students and their families on a day-to-day basis to help reengage them, but also to make them aware of our summer school opportunities that are available, as one of the things that families mention or students mention at times is that they feel behind so much that why go? And so we're trying to provide them with opportunities for why, and summer school is one of them. In light of our budget cuts, our team is looking for other ways to provide financial support to some of the things that we are working on, specifically Goal Area 1. And so we are, we have applied for a stronger communities grant. It's a sizable one, so we hope we get it. It will help us support the Goal Area 1, which has to do with a culture of safety and belonging. So our students' social emotional well-being as a means to academic success. That, that work was also a combined effort with cross, cross-departments. And we'll focus on student engagement, attendance, discipline, specifically in our middle schools, and a sense of belonging. They're also revising the support we will have for our parent educators in the year, in the year to come, as we want to make sure that they, too, have the support and professional development needed to do all of the wonderful things that they're doing with students, but feel supported in doing that. And that is also a cross-departmental effort. Our bilingual parent liaisons are attending the community needs assessments. And I did want to, to Deb's question, that is another mechanism for receiving input from our families and parents. Our schools, all of our schools this year, conducted two community needs assessments. And during these meetings, these workshops, our schools shared their data with them, attendance data, reading data, math data, youth truth data, with participants, and then collected their input on how they felt we could improve in those areas and any suggestions that they had in order to do so. This is not going to be a one-and-done practice for us. Community needs assessments will be something that our schools will continue to do as they craft their school improvement plans, to not only share with schools how they are doing, but get their input on what they should do next. Our parent liaisons, our bilingual parent liaisons are also putting on events for their families, too. One just passed, so our Spanish-speaking parent liaison just put on a women's health session, and over 50 Spanish-speaking moms attended. And we are also supporting a Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander event that's coming up. It's actually hosted by Heritage, but we're helping support that event, and that'll take place on this Friday. Finally, on a personal note, I wanted to thank all of the students' parents, staff, and those of you as well, for your very heartfelt and genuine well wishes as I transition into retirement. I'm very grateful for every email, phone call, and conversation, as it confirms for me the strong presence and true commitment to equity in our district. And that is all for my update.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Clarissa?
No.
Thank you.
Doing the, doing the job that needs to be done and doing it beautifully. Thank you, Clarissa.
Thank you, Clarissa. Grateful for the...
Was there any, was that it for the department update? Okay. All right, next is committee representative selection. This is our Instructional Materials Committee secondary representative. The board has reviewed and scored the six IMC secondary parent representative applications provided at the workshop at our last board meeting. So tonight, the board will vote by ballot for one representative. The board secretary, Superintendent Boyd, will then tally the vote. So at this time, all of us will go ahead and vote on the ballots that we received from Lori, and then we'll pass them down to John to tally them up.
I started. Where's my ballot?
Oh.
It's hiding behind my thing. Sorry, I didn't see it back there.
All right, it looks like we have a final selection. And do I need to say the number of the vote? The number of votes? A vote of three to two. Our person that we selected is, is it Andy Saguna? Andy Saguna? Does that sound right? Okay. Well, congratulations to Andy Saguna, and I'm sure we'll reach out to them. And we thank them for submitting their name and being part of that committee for us. All right, next is the good news report.
I didn't do it.
Was that to get our attention?
I did not do that.
To tell us about all the good news?
Hello, Superintendent Boyd and Board of Directors. Thank you very much for this opportunity. Plenty to talk about in our good news report. I start with a picture from the culture parade, the great picture of our board members, Vancouver Public Schools, superintendent, our superintendent, all together here. There's more pictures later on on the good news report. But weather held out. Dr. Williams there as well. Almost rained, but didn't. That's the key. I want to start with this story. A lot of people were, I know, I think, a board member, Rob Perkins, was there, and other board members, when we had Sarah Folden, who is the artist that created Y East's new logo. Their new mascot is the Wolverine. And Kate DeWine, the principal, had reached out to her, and we made a, the district made a connection with her. She's a Native American artist. And she helped, and she designed the new logos. There's multiple logos, an athletic logo, the one that you see here, which is the school logo. And then we, Y East welcomed Sarah to kind of present the artwork. And she told an amazing story about how connecting and doing this work really was a, made a positive impact on her. And so we had her back, and she basically, this story here, here is her telling the story about what it meant for her to be involved with this process, and the Kalos tribe being involved with this process. So I encourage people to listen to her story. It's very impactful. We have a lot of gardening going on in our district, I discovered, when the weather coming out, including students at Emerald Elementary School. They're working with master gardener volunteers from the Clark County Master Gardener Program. And they have a spring salad garden. So they've been working with some of the best gardeners to learn exactly what you need to do. They water it. They're out there, as you can see, working on it. So, and they're one of multiple schools that are doing gardening work. Burton Elementary School, we talked about a strategic plan. This really aligns with it. They have, what they're creating is a culture of hope. And what they've done is they've gotten a grant to use hope as a science. There's experts out there that have developed a way to measure hope. And what you find, and what we've found at Burton, is that if you can increase that hope score, the work they do in the classroom, their scores also increase. I learned a lot about this. And they had a hope night. So this story is kind of featured around the hope night, where the entire school community came out and really supported it. Students Helping Students story, Union High Schools, American Sign Language Club is volunteering to teach students at Harmony Elementary School, ASL. And it is packed. They had to sign up, and it was over 50 students that have come out, and it's grown. So you can see from these pictures just how many kids are out there and how much the Union High School students are enjoying teaching and doing a great job. I wanted to get down to, there's more pictures of the culture parade, all of our students and out there just having a great time. A really cool event at Burnt Bridge Creek Elementary School. I don't know if you call this a virtual wax museum. I just know that there are live children that acted like they were made of wax. And they, they dressed up as characters in history and people that impacted them. And then there was like a red button, not actually connected to the children through electricity, but when they, someone pushed it, they would come to life. So I had never heard of an event like that, but a very cool thing. And then I want to mention tons of scholarships going out to our students at this time of year for post-high school graduation, including a whole bunch that were at our Evergreen School District Foundation Gala. That was a very successful gala. It was thirty, I think, over 350 people out there. So, and so many students were honored and got to be applauded for earning those scholarships. So that is my report tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is board comments, so comments by the school board. Who'd like to start us off? Go ahead, Victoria.
I prefer to go second.
Go ahead, Rob.
I'd prefer to go second, second.
Oh, okay. A couple things I want to go over. I want to give a quick, brief update on the legislative session and all of that. But first, I'd like to just make a comment regarding a closing of a school, because that's come up multiple times. And we all know that that's definitely something that you have to always look at all the options and have looked at that. But I think it's important for people to know that closing a school can be a very, it can be very traumatic, it can be very emotional for a neighborhood community to lose their school. And so, and it's not a process you can just do overnight. It requires a big community conversation, planning, because it will impact not just that school, but the boundaries for all these other schools. And, I mean, as anybody who's watched when we've gone through just a simple boundary change to balance schools out, the emotion and distress that comes with changing schools and, you know, just shifting things around. And so I just, I wanted to just make sure people knew that those are things that would have to happen, and it's not like we just didn't ever think of it. It's just that it's the, it couldn't be done in the timing that if we were to do that, to engage our community in that process. So I just wanted to put that out there, because we've had letters and comments in board meetings. So, okay, so I'm going to get on to the legislative session and go over a few things on that. Some kind of policy wins that we have in there. Out of 125 bills that were proposed, only 34 of them passed, one being the increase in special ed K-12 multiplier and the cap from 13.5% to 15%. And I'll talk about that a little bit more. They streamlined some things with our WASDA elections. There was a COLA increase that's been codified, dual credit offerings that were solidified, school meal offerings, advanced some, college and the high school fees eliminated, and adjustments to pension contribution rates. Some operating budget wins, a $2.9 billion increase for K-12. Note that $2.6 billion of that is required maintenance level costs. $1.1 billion is one-time re-appropriated federal pandemic-related funding. There's $371 million for special ed, $261.4 million to support educator salary increases, $114 million for transition to kindergarten, $65.6 million for learning recovery, which is a one-time funding, and $26 million to the transportation safety net for special passengers. Let's see here. Some capital budget wins. There was some for small district and tribal compact schools modernization, some funding for energy assessments, school seismic safety grant program, urgent repair pool of money, equal access grants, and funding for physical health and nutrition, nutrition, and then some for lead and water. We have money to reimburse additional school districts required to participate in the federal community eligibility provision. So that. There's some money for school districts in fiscal year 2023 who are set to lose some or all of their LEA due to increases in housing values, and I know that impacts us. We have some reimbursement for serving meals for K-12, K-4. And, and then we have some additional monies to phase down districts impacted by regionalization and experience factor rebases. So there's that. Some wins out there. Let's see, there's some, some for small school districts, so that's always good. Full funding of the energy assessments. So that's, that's good. And we've talked about the rest of those. Let's see here, challenges and opportunities. Some challenges that we have after this session is most increases do not account for inflation, unfortunately. So we'll be dealing with that. They have passed some legislation regarding requirement for recess, for 30 minutes recess each day. The following, yes, that's right, 24 and 25. There's still no relief for bond passage, principal contract options. There's some challenges there. They do have a requirement for audio recording of school board meetings, which we already do. So that's not going to bother, that won't be a challenge because we already do it. Legislators will likely want time for the new multiplier to take before changing it again. So we might want it to be changed. And the transition to kindergarten bill leaves unaddressed concerns. So we'll get, we'll have more information on that as all of this rolls out. Special Ed, it directs the Superintendent of Public Instruction to develop an allocation and cost accounting methodology that ensures state general apportionment funding is allocated to a student's special education program when basic education services are provided in an alternative setting, and report that to the legislator, legislature. We've got some other review data that they'll be looking at, and there's some audit requirements. some other review data that, that they'll be looking at, and there's some audit requirements. So when we look at meeting requirements for special education, it increases the special education excess cost multipliers for pre-K and K-12 students. It increases the special education enrollment funding cap from 3.5% to 15%, and provides the average per pupil expenditure used to determine safety net award eligibility for high-need students is two times the average per pupil expenditure for districts with fewer than 1,000 students, and 2.2 times the average per pupil expenditure for districts with 1,000 or more students beginning in the 2023-24 school year. So those are just kind of some quick highlights. They're, they're eliminating the college and the high school fees. So that's awesome. So that will, hopefully, we'll be able to take advantage of that more and more. There's expanding access to dual credit programs, which is also a good thing. They had some legislation regarding feeding students. And the capital budget, their monies for school construction assistance program, seismic safety, and the healthy kids, healthy schools grants. So that will be coming out. There's also establishing, oh, no, that's for districts smaller than us, so never mind, I won't go into that. Transport, each and every student, neither of the pupil transportation bills were adopted this session. Funding was provided in the final budget to implement a portion of those bills provisions. $26 million is provided in fiscal year 2024. But I don't think, from what I'm hearing across the board, it's not getting us where we need to be for transportation.
Yeah, it allows us, it allows us to ask for reimbursement for students with special needs, foster, McKinney-Vento, students with IEPs that we transport on a reimbursement basis. But it did not address the overall transportation gap that many districts are facing.
And at our, we were at our Region Six meeting, which is the school boards in our Clark County Region Six area. And pretty much across the board, people were feeling a little disappointed by what we didn't get, you know. So it just feels like it's just still a challenge to, to handle what's going on at this point in time.
Really is. We made a case for $461 million based on the 2021 school year. And our enrollment was just above 13.5% that year, but this year it's higher, isn't it, for special education? I saw a document the other day that suggested to me it was much higher.
Yeah, I don't have that number, but I can get that.
And so we're kind of running in place as far as the funding goes, is that the needs are up, and the money is up, but it's, there's still this big gap. So we have to pull a fourth of the levy aside to just meet the requirements of the special education mandates.
And salaries and things like that. It, yeah, it is, it's, it's pretty much just treading water at this point.
Yep.
So, yeah. So that's all I have on legislative. As I get more things, and as we know more as to how that impacts our budget, well, I'm sure hear from Jennifer about what that's going to look like. But, so now we start planning for the next one. Already, already talking about it, so. And the, the culture parade was super-duper fun. I love it every year. Those kids are so cute. The weather held out for us. And it was a good event. It's always such a feel-good event. And I think more people should come and watch it, because it is fun and cute.
1,400 third graders in one spot, and they did great.
They did. They are awesome, those little guys.
All right. Thanks, Victoria. Rob?
I was talking to a principal of one of the high schools who said to me that he's thinking that all but 12 of his students will graduate. And that's not Union, that's one of the other high schools, which, which is really encouraging for me to see the work that folks are doing in the, one of the toughest years possible, still achieve results for students. And as I've said in the past, only having 12 to help through maybe a super senior year, or a GED path, or something, you know, whatever works for those kids, that's a lot less work than when only two-thirds of the students were graduating. It's a lot less work. So I'm really pleased with that anecdote, and interested in seeing both, you know, how the, how the graduation, how the graduation, graduation rate is, but also if it's possible without breaking student privacy or something, to see what the circumstances of the kids were who weren't able to obtain a diploma on time, and what services are available to them, which is something our counselors and principals know cold. But the summary of that would do, would be really good for us. I enjoyed the Skilled Trade Center. And if you haven't seen the Columbian article about that, I suggest reading it. It's, it was a great to see them publish our good news. And they did a really good job covering it. I was also the next day at the Salvation Army luncheon, where John Boyd was the presenter. And he told a, and John, you told a great personal story about how that organization helps, helped your community and your family, and, and helps our community. And it was, it was a joy to be along with that. Yeah. During that event, Representatives Waters and Chaney both approached me and expressed interest in working with us, and would like to set up some meetings and workshops to find out what they can do for the schools And I think that's it for me, is just to let you know that those connections were happening. And I have the mitigation workshop tomorrow scheduled, but I don't know which two of us will go to that. And that's all. Just, it's been a pretty good couple of weeks.
All right. Thanks, Rob. Jenny, Jackie, anything you want to add?
Just a couple things for me, for someone to thank all of you that did come to the Region Six meeting last week. Great feedback, and it was a really good workshop. You have a lot of good ideas. And then I wanted to recognize Superintendent Boyd, who was recognized from the ESD 112 for his 22 years of leadership as a public school administrator through WASA, the Washington School Association of School Administrators. That's amazing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're lucky to have your leadership here.
I forgot that John and I were at the, the Chamber of Commerce Legislative Recap. And John and I both noticed that the glaring omission was any real talk about education. So that just kind of tells you where we were on that whole thing. So.
Yeah, the legislative priorities this year in the state of Washington were focused on mental health, housing, and other things. And so consequently, education got less, I think, than we had hoped for. And those things also positively impact our students when we have the supports and services. So that's one thing we do have to keep in mind.
That's right.
All right. Next up is future agenda items. Is there anything that we want to add to our list that we have? I know we've got a list that we've got growing for the summer's planning meeting.
I think I, yeah, I mentioned mine already. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and do Student Board Representative Report. Sullivan, what do you got for us this evening?
There we go. Hi. Good evening, everybody. Earlier this evening, I had a meeting to discuss how this position will be expanded next year and in upcoming years. So far, we are looking to expand to have two students from each high school, including Heela and Legacy, come together to create an advisory team for the Board of Directors. We're looking for a very diverse group. We are looking to have our applications sent out in October. And we are so excited to expand student voice and have a lot more, just a lot more student voice up here. And I'm so excited. And I'm very thankful for all the support I've had through my time here.
Great. Thank you.
And you're going on a little trip with your band. I know you mentioned it before. What will you be doing there?
Tomorrow morning, the Heritage High School Wind Ensemble and Jazz One will be traveling to Los Angeles. We're going to be competing in the Forum Festival, and we will be performing at the Disney Imagination Studio, which is really exciting.
That is exciting.
That's big time, Conrad. Congratulations.
Have a fantastic time. All right. Next up is public comments. At this time, community members who wish to speak to the school board. Any community member wishing to address the board may do so during the designated time on the agenda for public comments, as long as the comments are not personnel-related, or about an individual employee or student, and are not legal in nature. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the board. Comments are to be directed to the Board of Directors as a whole, and may not be addressed to any individual member of the board, the administrative staff, or the audience. Please state your name and district affiliation. First up is Chuck Kepler.
Hi. Great to be up here again. My name's Chuck Kepler. I've been an Evergreen parent for 18 years now, and hope to be a future director here at Evergreen Public Schools. I wanted to start with this quote from Ayn Rand, "You can avoid reality, but you cannot avoid the consequences of avoiding reality." One of the things that I've been hearing lately is I'm getting more and more conversations with the public, is that people on the board and superintendent are saying that the numbers that I'm quoting are not accurate, they're disputing those numbers. So I just wanted to say first that all the numbers that I've used, especially the numbers to show the bloated administration here at EPS, have been inquired from public record requests from the school district itself, from the state and federal sources. So if you want to continue to say that my, the numbers that I'm quoting are incorrect, that means that your reporting is incorrect. The fact is that the spending in central administration, according to the state, as reported to the state, shows a 32% increase from 2016 to today. 32%. Our enrollment is down over 10% in that time. But our spending is up 32% in that one area. That's almost $7 million. How many positions would $7 million cover? When I asked one of the board members about why we continued to add elementary schools during this time of decline, and even took the extra money that we saved on a bond from good work and good administration, the, the board member replied, well, if you didn't use that money, we would lose it. That's a perfect example of the leadership that we've been given. You could have, and should have, returned those funds, not cashed in those bonds. You can allow them to expire and build trust with the taxpayers. But instead, we continue to build new buildings and replace buildings that aren't needed, that are half-full. The fact that you chose to spend taxpayer money without it being necessary is a prime example of why there needs to be a leadership change in this district. And I'm going to digress from these comments, because it was brought up by the board that people are asking about closing elementary schools, which is something that I brought up. The decline has been happening since 2016, and definitively since 2018. You cannot have the excuse of time. You've had time. I was told directly that if we were to start making those changes, it would have been done in January. So my question to you is, why weren't you doing it in January? We've built a brand-new Burton, blocks down from Endeavor. We've built a brand-new school and redistricted. Don't tell me that people are going to be upset, and this isn't the reason why, because that's leadership. I'm going to tell you, the best situations I've been in leadership have been in the situations where I knew that no matter what choice I made, I was going to make somebody angry. Because what that allowed me to do was to do the right thing.
Thank you, Chuck. All right. Next up is Deb. Is it Bogan? Bogan? Deb Bogan? Hi, welcome again.
Apologize for the disruption of my children.
Oh, that's okay.
They're doing the best, as possible. I'm surprised I made it this far. My name's Deb. I am a parent of an Evergreen student, and also a concerned community member. My concern is regarding the looming food crisis. And I have a very broad-scope plan, but it, and it could be deployed in many different areas of community sectors. But I saw an opportunity with the growing, the gardening going on at other schools, and then also listening to the family collaborative discussions. One way that we could kind of expand on the, I'm sorry, I'm so nervous. I've never done this before.
Okay, you're fine.
I have like a whole outline. I could, if you, if there is interest in the district anywhere, that I would be willing to share, and like kind of finalize. But it would, more community gardens is going to bring stability to the food costs. Families that are moving to the district that are from different backgrounds, they kind of want to bring a sense of home with them. Providing a space for them to be able to do that also sets us up to be able to expand learning pods, and come together for cultural diverse backgrounds, and learning about each other. There's a lot of rituals in farming. Rituals are very solid parts of community and building community. They are actions we imbue with meaning and significance that enhance our lives in some way. There's always, there's been a lot of studies on the hope. I would like to further the Tel Aviv University studies that were done between 2016 and 2019. They, well, probably further back than that. There was a, the course was What a Plant Knows, and it dissected the five senses of a plant. And it kind of piggybacked on the water studies that have been done for many decades. And so I'd like to piggyback on both of those opportunities, and look into being able to harvest kindness. And what is the possibility? And can we measure kindness? And then I also simultaneously would like to further the botanical studies for the deep-space faring plants, and, and also expand, deep-space faring plants. Oh, OSU got a federal funding for botanical herbal remedies, so we could have our students being prepared to like advance these different types of things. And, and then also, it would cut down tariff costs and food costs over time if we had all the campuses contributing and getting all the kids. And then also, the mental health effects of gardening are very positive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bogan, if you'd like to share your outline, we'll make that available for the board. Yeah, anytime. You can email it or give it to Lori at any time.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up is Robert Flores.
Hi. Can I start?
Yes, please.
Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, I stand before you today to address an important matter that affects the very essence of our educational institution. I urge you to consider the removal of flags and symbols from our school premises that represent personal beliefs. While it is essential to respect individual freedoms and expressions, it is equally crucial to foster an inclusive and unbiased learning environment for all. Schools play a vital role in shaping the minds of young individuals, teaching them not only academics, but also the values of tolerance, acceptance, and unity. The presence of flags that represent personal beliefs, regardless of their nature, can inadvertently create division among students, and hinder the cultivation of a diverse, inclusive community. Education should be a safe haven where students from various backgrounds can come together, learn from one another, and develop a deep appreciation for the diversity that exists in our society. When personal belief flags are prominently displayed, they can inadvertently isolate and marginalize those who do not share the same beliefs. It is crucial for us to create an environment where every student feels respected, valued, and included, regardless of their personal beliefs or backgrounds. By removing flags that represent personal beliefs, we will be taking a step towards ensuring that our school remains a neutral space, focused solely on the pursuit of knowledge and personal growth. This action is not about suppressing individual voices. Rather, it is about creating an environment that encourages respectful dialogue, and fosters a sense of unity among our student body. Moreover, it is essential to consider the potential conflicts and conflicts. Moreover, it is essential to consider the potential conflicts and controversies that may arise from the presence of personal belief flags. By removing such symbols, we eliminate the possibility of students feeling targeted or judged based on their beliefs. Our school should be a place where students can freely express their thoughts without fear of reprisal or discrimination. Instead of focusing on personal beliefs, let us redirect our efforts towards celebrating the values that bind us together as a community, respect, understanding, and empathy. By emphasizing these shared principles, we can create a positive and inclusive atmosphere that promotes a sense of belonging for all students irrespective of their personal beliefs. I urge the school board to seriously consider the removal of flags representing personal beliefs from our school premises. Let us embrace the opportunity to foster an inclusive and harmonious environment that encourages open-mindedness, empathy, and understanding among our students. Together, we can build a school community that not only values diversity, but celebrates it. I thank you for your attention and consideration, the positive impact this change can have on our educational institution.
Thank you, Robert. All right, and with that, that concludes our public comment section. At this time, 7:03, the board is going to go into a recess to sign documents, followed by an executive session to discuss potential litigation, expected to last approximately thirty minutes. Again, thank you all for coming this evening.